Ladies and gentlemen, members of city council, please attend the call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 8, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simms?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, ma'am. I have four items for you tonight. The first is a briefing on Paradise Creek by Brandon. You have a resolution on your agenda. The second is a briefing on CCDI. The third is an overview on our budget. And the fourth is to give you a heads up on an item that's on your agenda that relates to parade permits.
Okay.
And that will be on your regular agenda. So Brandon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Wright.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, this is a report for you this evening. And as Mr. Rowe mentioned, we have some good news to announce. And it is that we have Paradise Creek Nature Park, our newest addition to our park system, is open. And it opened on December 28. And it is open dawn to dusk. If you have not had the opportunity to go out and visit, you can do. As planned, the first phase of improvements were completed before the end of the year. So now we have trail system of about 2.3 miles of ADA accessible trails. We have a previous parking lot. We have the mound and the wetlands and the bridge that goes over the wetlands. It's all completed. And as you know, this work has all been done by Elizabeth River Project and fundraising efforts that they've undertaken over the last several years. And they continue to own the park and will continue to make capital improvements to that park. And the city has, through the agreement with ERP, begun the maintenance of the park, even though ERP continues to own it and make capital improvements. The item that's on your agenda tonight is to take advantage of an opportunity for some federal grant funding to really aid and accelerate the completion of the next phase improvement. And that is with the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. That is federal money that's administered through the State Department of Conservation and Recreation. The city is the applicant for this grant and will administer the project. And we'll need to upfront the cost of the approximately $337,000 in improvements. But the grant will reimburse us for half of that. And the other half, which is a local match, will be reimbursed to the city from ERP. But what you have in front of you tonight is just a brief illustration of those improvements that will be funded through the grant. The first page is a map that identifies the addition to the parking lot, the new kayak launch, and the building. And then the subsequent pages give either architect drawings or pictures of similar new kayak launches in other parks in the area. But what's before you tonight is a governing body resolution that would be attached with the grant. Basically, the city supports the application for the funding. And then if we are awarded the funding, we would come back before you for an appropriation into the grant's fund for the total amount of the project. And then we would get reimbursed from the grant and from ERP for the project. Any questions?
No. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I see Marjorie Mayfield Jackson, the director of ERP, in the audience. And full disclosure, I am a member of the Elizabeth River Project Board. And I didn't do any of this myself, but I think it would be nice if we allow Marjorie to just share with us that big top dollar figure of what has been privately raised to make this park available to the citizens of Portsmouth, because it's a pretty big number.
Any objections?
No.
You mind being on the spot?
I'm on that, Marjorie.
Thank you. Take the podium if you would.
I have to count it off in my head now.
That's all right.
Got a lot of Ms.
First of all, I really appreciate the partnership of the city. It's really exciting to be here and know that the park is now open by the city after all our efforts. And it looks great. And it's been really welcomed by the community. We have a lot of excited people using it now. And it looks wonderful. Just recently, we've raised over $2 million, including the purchase and the improvements in a lot of private money. And then it's matched by over $5 million, I think, that the Port Authority spent on that beautiful wetland. But it's going to look really great when we invite you to the grand opening on June 22nd.
Okay.
And we continue to raise a lot of money for Phase Two.
Okay. Well, thank you for what you do and your board. And we're glad to be partners and we look forward to the completion of it. Thank you, Marjorie. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, sir. And now Fred's going to give our briefing on CCDI. This is a status report. This is part of this process of keeping you informed on trying to save the $313,000 in HUD home fines.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Chair, members of city council, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Rowe indicated staff provided for council a briefing on December 11, 2012. He provided that to you, gave you the then current status of the properties that were under possible auction. There were three properties controlled by CCDI. If you'll remember, CCDI had begun projects, as we call them, that had used home funds, which were through HUD, for the purchase, repair, for low to moderate housing. During that briefing, we were able to inform city council that the pending auction that was supposed to have taken place almost immediately as we learned of it had been delayed by BBNT for 30 days. Since that 30-day period is now drawing to an end, we thought it would be better to provide you with another one where we now stand. If you recall, the three properties that BBNT had begun the foreclosure process on was 1029 Ann Street, 2231 Elm Avenue, and 309 Peach Street. As we provided to you in December, the Ann Street property had received almost $24,000 in reimbursements for acquisition and other fees, repairs. We learned in meetings with CCDI and BBNT and then through title searches, after our December 11 meeting, that there existed deeds of trust held by BBNT that were in default. For this property, that amount was $147,000. Now let me, for a moment, give me some freedom. At that meeting in December, we discussed, and it was, I think, believed by many people that all of that money had gone into repairs on those properties, on those deeds of trust. We have since learned that's not the case. They went into other projects, not on these properties. We wanted to make that clear because after the meeting, we had a lot of discussion about that. But that $147,000 that's on this deed of trust, most of that, we understand now, went to another project and not this house.
This is one of the ones that hadn't even had a permit taken out yet, right? I think we had two with no permits and one it hadn't got to a final.
Yes, sir. And we've also learned that on one of those, permits may not have been needed for most of the work. It was plaster and repairs and carpeting, things of that sort that would not require permits. And we're still investigating that. And in fact, we have staff, hopefully by the end of the week, through the Housing Authority and Building and Officials Office, that will be able to be inside all of these houses to make it right up.
Okay.
Again, the second house on Elm Avenue, and this is the one we feel may not need a lot of permits. It was a lot of painting, but we're still continuing to work on that, has received almost $101,000 in reimbursements. Again, the deed of trust on this property is in the amount of $150,500. We've also learned that there is approximately a $1,000 lien for water charges on this property.
They haven't paid their water bill.
The Peachtree property, and this is the one where permits had been obtained, has received over $118,000 in reimbursements. And for this property, the deed of trust that is in default is $143,700. Please remember, my comments said, the money wasn't spent on these properties.
So all three of them so far, the deed of trust, none of that money was put in there or?
We've not found any money that's been from those deeds of trust put in that were used on other projects.
Okay. Robin Peter to pay poll, kind of?
Yes, sir.
That's right, Mr. Rowe.
Remember, we've talked, and our primary goal from staff point of view since we've been working on this was a number, $313,000. That is the amount of money that has been reimbursed to CCDI for these three properties. If the properties are sold at auction, then the properties would be considered terminated. And the city of Portsmouth will, through its general fund, have to reimburse HUD that $313,000. Our primary, and everything we've worked for, has been to try and eliminate or reduce that dollar figure if that would be a burden on the entire city. Again, as we indicated at the briefing, we made a reference to $417,000, $419,000 in the deed of trust. If you add it up, you'll see that it's closer to $442,000. When you add penalties and interest, it's closer to $460,000. Now, while we learned the figure was higher than we had thought at that time, I think we have a small success to bring to you tonight. That was, we have been able to have an agreement with BBNT that instead of the time running out in the next day or two, they have extended, again, the time period to January 31st to create a concrete plan for the repayment of the monies. Now, remember, a concrete plan, we don't have to have the money paid by the 31st, just a plan to have it paid for.
And that's this money here, that's the bank loan.
$442,000, that's to BBNT.
That's correct.
That must be secured before you can do anything else.
Plus, there'd be $460 with penalties and interest.
Right.
Yeah, unless the bank is willing to, in order to request a closure, have what's called a short sale. The goal is to get the bank out of the equation so that the only parties left are HUD and whoever owns the houses then.
Right.
$460.
We reported to you that there appeared to be four alternatives at that time. We have spent a lot of waking hours and sleepless hours trying to think of other alternatives. And we have not. We are left with the four. However, it appears the third alternative that we gave you, which was to find an acceptable third party to HUD's liking, and in this case, PRHA has stepped forward and seems to feel they may have the ability to pay the money owed to BBNT through some funds they have, and rehabilitate the properties, and then find proper or qualified tenants or residents for the properties.
And again, it's the use of an acronym, it's a short sale. They're not going to get $442,000 if they try to auction this property. They're going to get something less. And so the goal would be to negotiate that number down to something substantially less. Then HUD would come, not HUD, but PRHA would come in, pay the bank, they would take title to the houses. They get their monies back when the houses are then completed and then sold and made available as housing stock.
And then that takes us off the hook for the $313,000.
Right, yeah. And so the goal is to get the bank out and get the project completed.
Well, go one step further. How do we make PRHA whole? Because clearly they're going to be in a deficit here.
They get hold by the resale.
They get hold for the profit.
Once we get the bank out, PRHA takes title to the property. The property is completed as far as the improvements are concerned. When they sell the property to the next homeowner who moves in, that's how they get their money back.
So the rationale is that PRHA thinks they can get that number down low enough that once we sell those three houses, they'll recoup their funds there. Because right now, at $460,000 versus these three homes averaging about $90,000, we only, there's about $150,000 delta there. So we're hoping that the bank will give them that much grace.
And the bank understands the fact, if they go to auction and try to sell this property, they're not going to get the principal out. And they're not going to get the principal, nor the penalty, nor the interest. So the goal is to get the bank out and get that number low enough so that when PRHA takes title and they sell it, they're made whole again.
And HUD doesn't have a problem with PRHA?
Well, that's, that's the next line.
Okay.
Good question. And isn't it, because that is now, once BBNT and the bank is out of the picture, this becomes the prime concern we have. And that's the reason that I'm not changing my feelings on success right now. We're still there. HUD has said that any transfer of the property, whether it's to a qualified individual or to just anybody off the street, counts as termination of the project, and we would be on the hook for $313,000. Staff has been spending, I'm going to say probably at least two, maybe three phone calls, conference calls a week since our last discussion, showing some changes or some special nuances with the federal code that we feel does not require that. If it transfers to a qualified individual, which would have been a CHODA, another CHODA, or to the Housing Authority who's qualified, we feel that that would be a, not a termination, it's a transfer of the property. And transfers are not defined in the code. They are just plain not there. And so that's one of the points that we are looking at. In fact, so you know, staff is going to Richmond this Thursday to have a sit-down meeting with the Virginia representatives from HUD to go through in detail. It's something that you can do a lot easier face-to-face than you can do over the phone. We feel like it's important enough to do that. The second point that we have is there are limits on the number of dollars that can be spent on each property based on the number of bedrooms in the facility. And we are concerned that, we want to make certain that we don't exceed those limits, which would cause some funds to have to be expended. And those are other areas that we're looking into. So we have two issues with HUD that we're still negotiating with.
But that would force you to a sell price with BBNT if you can't supersede that number, right?
Yes, sir. So we've got some alternatives that we're looking at. They are not there, they're not in concrete, so I'm not comfortable saying we're a success yet. It's still an issue that goes through. Once that has happened, once we have clear understanding with HUD, then PRHA satisfies the deeds of trust, takes title to the property, begins the rehabilitation through a bid process, and then they complete the process. The fourth component, I guess, of that, of the five that we've got, is the selling of the qualified individuals. That may be an issue, just finding of qualified individuals in the economy, but that seems to be changing now. So by December, when we feel like this is coming to completion, we should be able to have some individuals that would be qualified and able to move in. The last point that we have just discovered in the last couple of days is disheartening. We have found that there's an additional $41,000 plus that's owned by CCDI in the form of federal taxes, state taxes, a judgment, and water liens that's out there. It's like peeling an onion. Every time we do, we find another something there. And so again, this is part of what we're having to work on and try to work with to come up with a solution that is a concrete solution that we can all live with, takes us off the hook and gets three families into a home that is.
Tax liens are really kind of interesting. And we're working with the city attorney's office because it's important to know who's in line first. Does the tax lien take first place against the deed of trust or just what? There's some indication that the tax lien may be in line first. But it's not our issue, it's just another issue that complicates the matter. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't BBNT take care of that as a sell of the property first, to give you free and clear?
Whatever. That's going to have to get, because the people, it's federal income tax. And it's probably, and I don't know this to be a fact, they are nonprofit, so it's most likely the withholding tax. And it's called the 941. And the way the IRS looks at that is that the employer holds up money in trust. And the trust is that you're going to remit it in a timely fashion to the IRS. And so one scenario may be that they didn't remit that money. And the IRS and the state have put a lien of this much money against the property or against CCDI.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Fred, what's the plan B if for some reason HUD doesn't approve PRHA?
Right now, we don't have a plan B. We're putting right now the eggs in the basket because we feel like we've got an individual that is qualified. There's been a little bit of give on HUD, it's not completely dead. You know, that's the reason that we're continuing to follow that, is we feel like that there is some discussion points that have come up that they've agreed with and that we would be able to be successful there.
So another CHODA couldn't come in and be that plan B like habitat for humanity?
Even another CHODA would be counted as a termination, is what they had said up to now. We're hopeful that when we finish our discussions with them on Thursday, that there's a loosening of the decision and coming around to saying it's a transfer rather than a.
And that's why we need to have a face-to-face meeting with HUD. We can do this better. We can read body language in that room. The goal is to really try to come out with HUD being comfortable with what we're recommending. And so this is on the critical path. I mean, it's very much in the, yes, sir.
You know, companies, public companies that have boards of directors, those boards of directors have a responsibility to make sure that the companies that they represent are run properly. How does that work in this case?
That's a good question. And you would think that.
More of a legal matter.
It's legal.
Well, we have an attorney here.
We'll look at that as a possible plan B or C, depending on what comes to.
You know, boards of directors have a responsibility to be engaged.
Or viability insurance.
Absolutely. That too.
Our exposure is at the $313,000 at max.
Yes, sir.
Plus, we've already given $260.
So you're going to be at $500.
And those were previous appropriations made by a previous council.
Do we have any safeguards in place so it doesn't happen again? Or how are we going to, if it comes up again, how are we going to make sure? Are we going to have a takedown of the money according to the progress of the house or?
Right.
I would think.
But the thing is, is that when the bank, when that nonprofit went to the bank, they did it without our knowledge. The bank asked for collateral, they served up these three properties. They got a loan from the bank for some other purpose. I don't know what that purpose was. So if we're not, there's hardly any way that we can be in the loop on that because we don't have any title to the property.
What I'm saying is when they took the $93,853, somebody, is there any safeguards in place for it?
And it's Jeff and Fred and our team that, and you've heard the pushback from that, we're too hard on them.
Well, I was going to, what I was going to state that once we get out of this, that we do get a briefing to the council as to how that process works. I am still concerned how we let $313,000 of federal funds out to door without some type of check in place that we've, yeah, we're at this step, so we do that. And I don't want to get into that now, but I would like a briefing because we don't want to be too hard on people, but we've got to follow the guidelines, and the guidelines are the guidelines. And so if we were to follow them, we may not be where we are now. I mean, so clearly, there's something that we have done to kind of make this worse. Yes, sir.
Along that line, Mayor, the last money that we appropriated was contingent upon an audit being performed. Was that done or?
And I think it's very doubtful that you're going to get an audit from CCDI. They have virtually closed their door. And although before the end of last calendar year, I got Maury Cook to agree that we do an audit and try to follow the money. And as I may have mentioned, the council, and I know I have, they have the same auditors that we have. And we waived conflict of interest, he orally waived conflict of interest, but the auditors have got to do a self-check to determine whether or not they can remain independent.
And do both.
Yeah. Both. We understand, and this is just, this is hearsay, that their books are in such sad shape that an audit may cost more, you know, it'd be foolish for us if we do the audit.
We're going to stop digging a hole. We're not going to dig the hole, no digging.
I thought they mentioned that those audits were done, they would just have been held because they had payment.
They did mention. And that if once they got payment, they could release them.
Exactly right. And that's why it was contingent upon them producing them. They had to pay the auditor. You're right.
Did they get all the money last time?
Oh, yeah. Money gone.
No, you don't get it all.
All right, thanks. You're done. Thank you, sir. And y'all are going up, next week, you're going to HUD?
This Thursday.
This Thursday, okay. Are you taking a PRHA rep with you or nobody from PRHA? But they're engaged, though, they're with you, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. They ought to be part of the discussion process if they got all the back information.
You have, this looks daunting, but the topic is a briefing on the budget. Can we rearrange it and let Brian talk about the, are you prepared to talk about the amendment? Kind of matter come up. We have a section in the city code, this is not the budget, that deals with parade permits. And it's been in the city code for some time. It's a deal permit, and you pay for the costs associated with that parade. And then it exempts certain organizations by name and gives council the authority to exempt anybody else. And so we have an application from an organization that's had this parade 13 times in the past and never got charged for security. And they shouldn't get charged now. A decision was made some time ago, apparently within the last year, stop honoring the city code in the breach and honor the words on the paper, which is you don't get your parade permit until you pay deposit for public safety costs. And Brian's going to tell you.
Good evening. Mr. Rowe's pretty much outlined the situation. The specific request before us is the Buffalo Riders have their annual parade of horses in February, is scheduled for next month on the 16th. And so in the code, it's Section 22-12, and that's the section that covers not only parade but any special events, so 5K races, any kind of public gatherings that require permit. And it specifically, it says in there that the permittee, the organization that gets the permit is required to pay the cost for the city's cost, so security, setup, cleanup, anything like that. And it specifically exempts things like the Memorial Day Parade, the Old Town Ghost Walk, Fishbowl Parade, a couple of others that are annual events. And so the code section gives city council the ability to exempt any other, any other event by name, by vote. So that's what's before you this evening. And like Mr. Rowe indicated, the Buffalo Riders Parade has been going on for quite some time. And that code section's just not been uniformly enforced through the years. And it is now, the attempt is to be uniformly enforced. And so this is the first time that it's hit them, that they've been put in the request for a permit that they've been told. they've said, where they've been told that, okay, there's some expense that you're gonna have to cover. And so, that's why they requested it before you this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
A question and a comment. I had, and I hadn't thought of it this way. I had a citizen call me this afternoon who happens to be involved in parades in other cities, she works for another city, but she lives in Portsmouth. And her concern as a city department head in another city was, it's, in, you're telling all your departments to cut their budgets, but yet, you're giving away parade fee, who's absorbing that fee? Is it coming out of the police department's budget, or? I mean, I know in this case, there's, they've never paid any money anyway.
They still pay the $50 permit, but that's not going, but it's the extra cost.
Parades are, are part of what makes a community great.
Oh, and that's great.
It's part of the R spirit of the city.
And I think we've, in fact, have asked staff to do a benchmark study, let's, let's look at this thing, let's get beyond this. I recommend that we give, exempt them, not only this time, but going forward, because this is really important.
I'm not, I'm not saying that at all.
No, no. And your question is very, very good. And so, we're studying that, and it may be something that we decide to put in the budget, that, you know, this is what we do as a community, this is what helps the quality of life.
Yes, sir.
I'm okay with that, but do we actually know the cost to the city of.
As part of the study.
Taking care of the needs of a parade.
And for 13 years, we didn't know the cost, and we ignored the cost, we just saw it as part of.
It can't be much for this little parade.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
The estimate for this one was less than $1,000, and it was mostly for police.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would just hope that as we look at it, we look at it equitably across the board, because only certain parades hit in certain areas, and one of the things that we did receive, some concern about, was the changing of the routes. At one time, I think about some of the parades that came up High Street, and then they were moved to other sections, but there were still parades permitted to be on High Street, but the routes were changed to coming along by Norcom High School, and coming through the back way. I think that when we look at it, you need to really critically analyze.
Yes, ma'am.
What would be considered as the parade route? So, there is no disparity between which route goes on which road when there's a parade in the city. That brings about harmony in your city.
Yes, ma'am.
While you're studying this in the future, in, a year or so ago, in my work with the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee.
I remember.
When we brought the Coast Guard City status to the city. We had a wonderful 100-mile bike race that was part of that, that brought a lot of folks to Portsmouth. And that did not happen last year, over what amounts to about $3,000 worth of expense. So, I would certainly like that, it's not a parade, but it's, it's part of an event
It's a PR piece.
We have been nominated by Congress to participate in, and I'm afraid if we don't continue to massage that relationship, we're gonna lose it. So, I would certainly like for, and I mentioned this to Councilman Edmonds as he goes into that group now, it's something we really need to look at in the future, and don't panic about it the end of the day.
Well, I asked last year that we look into this matter, because only, again, I'm glad we're enforcing the rules, we should've been all along, to make sure we get all these on the table, and make sure we're comparing apples to apples, and that someone having a private event, making money on a private matter, and using the city, that's two totally different things, and I was getting some of that last year when I asked.
Right.
Some questions on the bike ride, because I think if it's something that we sponsor, we ought to sponsor, and we ought to be the coordinators of it, and, and that Coast Guard event is one of them.
And in all fairness, I know, I mean, I'm no bike rider, but I know it takes a lot more police to deal with a 100-mile bike ride than, you know, the horses coming down 25 blocks of London and High Street, I understand, but that's what I'm saying, something to look at.
Well, that's a good point.
It's a good study.
We talked about being consistent with everything, so it, it won't be that, so good point, Elizabeth. Yes, sir?
Obviously, the horses have special needs, too, but whatever we do, we need to be consistent.
That's true.
And come up with a policy on what the cost is, and apply it to everyone equally.
Equally, that's right.
I think we agree.
I think we're all on the same page. Yes, sir?
Just as a point of order, on the agenda that went out originally, this was listed as a motion, we've determined that it's really gonna be, it really should be an ordinance, adoption of an ordinance, amending the code to specifically include.
The Buffalo Riders.
And so, that was at the suggestion of the city clerk, and I think it was a good one, because this would, depending on the results of your, of the survey, it, it will prevent this having to come back before council the next year, when the Buffalo Riders come back.
And this is a good fix, and I apologize to Debra, this, this developed late in the agenda-making process, so it didn't make your form of, per se, but we felt it was so important that we move forward. Literally, we're on the telephone in Debra's office with the mayor.
Right. But they're planning and need to get things done.
And every comment that you all made tonight is right on the line.
Valid.
It's one that troubles me.
Right. Okay, very good.
I'm gonna be watching the clock, because you need to go into your closed meeting by 6:15.
Let me read.
No, 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 he's gonna do the budget first.
Yes, ma'am. Ready?
Ready. Yes, ready.
And if you have a hard time looking at the slides, we can, we can show the light.
Cut the lights. Oh, teed off.
Got a Jesu moment.
Okay. Click your light. It's all or none, we'll have to fix that. We're starting, well, we've started the budget process, we started the very first day that I arrived, and I wanted to talk with you about the things that will drive this year's budget. This year's budget being the budget that you will adopt for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. And I wanna talk in three areas, and that is, we'll go to the next slide, the general fund, the utility fund, and the pension plan funding. So, let's take a look at the general fund. You're required by law to have a balanced budget. You've gotta have a budget where revenues equal expenditures, R equal E. And typically, at this point in time, you have a small r and a great big E, and that's where we find ourselves. On the revenue side, the worst case is that we find next year that we have less revenues anticipated than what we're taking in this year. The next best case is that we have the same revenue level as we have this year. The best case for us to be in is to have more revenue next year anticipated without a tax increase at all than what came in this year. And as we look at our initial view, the revenue groove looks to be limited. It's not the worst case, but we're working with Janie to make sure that we get a on-the-mark projection. If you, when you do a budget, if you make a mistake on the revenue side, you want to be surprised at the end of the year, you wanna make sure that you underestimated revenue. So, I, we're in the process of doing our forecasts for not only next year, but for the next four years, too, five years. One important thing, one penny of real estate tax equals $700,000. And so, if you come in my office as a department head, and you talk about a program, my first reaction is, how many pennies does that own the tax?
That's good.
Two, is five, is it? How, what is the equation?
It's few.
And the current budget, the budget that you adopted last year, that we're living within now, the budget for 2012, 13, is balanced with the use of almost $8 million in the fund balance. So, you've got R plus 8 million equal your expenditures. Now, let's take a look at some trends. These years are actual, they're actually from our audit, and this gives you an idea of what our revenue collection has been since 2008. And this is your adopted budget for this year. So, you can see what the trend has been, it hasn't been a lot of fluctuation. A good, a good year, a good year here between 2011 and 2012. Okay? Let's go to the next slide. Breaking it down to real estate tax, that gives you an idea of what the trend is going to be. And going to the next slide, which is personal property tax, a slight increase in the collection of revenue from personal property tax. Next slide. Next slide is the business professional occupation license, the BEPOL tax. And it's kinda stable the last three years, after being a high of 6.4, and remember, these are actual numbers here. Okay? These are your, when, when people ask you where you get your money from, you get it primarily from the real estate tax and from the personal property tax. And these are things, if you want to use the Latin term, they're called ad valorem taxes. They're based on the value of what you're taxing. If the value goes up, the revenue goes up. If the value goes down, the revenue goes down. Logent tax, we scratched our head when we looked at this one, and again, these are actual numbers. We surmise that this is when the Holiday Inn went offline. And there's no empirical evidence, that's just intuitive on our part, but it's been relatively stable, $700,000 last year, we're looking at 800 in this year's budget. Restaurant tax, the same thing. Sales tax. I think this reflects the economy.
Yeah.
If you have money to spend, you spend the money. If you don't have a job, you don't have any money to spend. If you, if you're on a limited income, and the economy is bad, and, and look at the trend line, it went from a high of 7.8 million in 2008, the recession starts, and it's slowly coming back up.
Yeah.
What can cause a decline in, in, in the sales tax? Well, people just stopped buying, and that could be a result of the, the economy. Businesses close in Portsmouth, so you lose the base, the outlets where people can buy stuff. Or they buy out of town. And as we look forward, we want to try to foster as much buying in Portsmouth as we can. So, it's really important that our economic development program be geared to being sensitive to sales tax. Can we go forward? Okay, the other is revenue from the state, and after being whacked here, this has been pretty, pretty stable. And we don't know the final outcome of what the General Assembly's gonna do, and they go into session this coming Wednesday. All right? Now, on the expenditure side, I've been talking about revenue, and I told you that we think there'll be a slight increase in revenue, you saw the trends that, that makes it appear that the, the revenue is pretty stable. On the expenditure side, let's talk about the expenditures that we're looking at next year that we don't have this year. Using our current budget as a starting point, and that's roughly 20, 229 million dollars, we're facing some increased costs in certain areas. And these increased costs are creating a challenge for us, this is what we're gonna work hard at, squeeze that E down so it's the same size as R, so that we can present to you a balanced budget, and hopefully, the best case would be the not to have any fund balance in the budget. And how good would it be not to have a real estate tax? So, that's the goal that we're shooting for, whether or not we can get there, we'll keep, keep working hard at that. General fund expenditures have been pretty stable, again, these are the actuals, and this is the budget that you adopted, so you're still in that budget, you don't have the actual numbers for that. Debt service. And our debt service has been pretty stable, there's nothing spectacular about this, you, you're well within your debt limit, and you're well within your debt service policy, so that's not a big problem for us. This is an interesting slide, it shows revenues, which are the columns, versus, and these are actual, versus the actual expenditures. And this is the best place that you wanna be, you wanna have that line below your revenue line.
It's called a surplus.
And that's how, sir?
It's called a surplus.
Surplus.
I would call it adding to the fund balance.
Righty-dah.
That's a better term.
Yeah, people call it the surplus, but that money goes into the unappropriated fund balance.
Yes.
Now, let's look at the expense drivers. We've got new debt service of 2.4 million dollars. I'm gonna recommend a general wage increase, and I don't know what that will be, as we work through the process, I wanna keep this on the table as long as we can, and I want it to be a significant amount of money. So, as we try to get that equation in balance, again, revenues equal expenditures, we'll know exactly what we can do here, but it's really important that we be fair to our employees. It's been a long time, it's been five years without a, an increase. We've got vacant positions that are mission critical. Remember my analogy about a Volkswagen? Our job is to pick up a Volkswagen, and you're on the front bumper, and I'm on the back, we're not gonna pick it up with just two people. If we get enough people around that Volkswagen, we'll pick it up, and it's gotta be the right people. And so, part of what we're gonna do is look at these vacancies, and if a vacancy is vacant for four years, it may meet, it may say to us that we don't need that position. But I can tell you some critical ones that we need, it's like the comptroller and the purchasing department, these interim department heads need to be addressed, and we're addressing those as we, as we move forward. We know that the per dam cost at the regional jail is gonna increase, and it's just shy of $400,000. And we have not gotten a school budget, but I would anticipate that they won't be asking for more money than what you've appropriated this year. And remember that you, part of that $8 million that you appropriated from the fund balance, more than half of that went to the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
The required pension contribution is 5.4 million, and the fully funded, and this is post-employment benefits, these are benefits that we provide employees who have retired out, like health insurance. And we have an, a study, an actuarial study made, and that cost is 7.8. Now, do the math. You can add this column up, and then divide it by 700,000, and you can then get a feel for how much money that represents on the tax rate. I didn't do it because we still have some unknowns here, and what we want to do is squeeze these extra Es down to something that we can live with.
John, that, that 5.4 pension, all that's no new additional.
Well, it is.
That's the new addition.
And I'll get to that. The third component is the pension plan, so if, may I hold your question?
Sure.
Okay. Let's go to utility fund. Now, there are two drivers in the utility fund, two drivers. One is the customer base, if you've got an expanding customer base, you've got expanding revenues, if you've got a contracting customer base, you've got contracting revenues. And guess what? Oh, well, before I go there, the other, it, we've had rate increases every year, on the average, 9.7% on both the water rate and on the sewer rate. One penny on water generates $76,000, one penny on. One penny on the sewer rate generates $33,000. Now, let's look at our customer base for next year. We know that it's going to shrink by at least one customer, and that's Smithfield Foods. And they're a big water sewer user. And we will lose a half a million dollars in revenues. And the paradox is, is that we will not get a corresponding decrease in operating expenses. And so you can do the math. We've already got a little bit of a loss of revenue. Now, the other thing that drives the budget is our capital improvements program. Our system dates back to the 1890s. We've got lines that are 75 to 100 years old. We have a very, very good capital improvements plan. The city has been really paying attention to capability capital improvements for a good while. And on the average, we spent about $10 million a year worth of bond proceeds for these capital improvements. And we cash finance about $5 million. Pay as you go. We're paying it right out of our revenue. So we do about $15 million worth of capital projects. Now, the one good thing about this bad economy... How about that for a paradox? The one good thing about the bad economy is that people want work. And contractors are sharpening their pencils when they put bids in. And we might estimate a project be $1 million. We issued bonds for $1 million, and when we closed the project, it only cost us $900,000. And so we're finding that across the board, and we have savings from bond proceeds that are...
2.8.
2.8, almost $3 million. Now, taking that $3 million and lashing it together with the 5, we're looking at possibility of not recommending that we go to the bond market next year, and that we end up in a situation where we can hopefully balance this budget, this portion of the budget, the utility fund. Because remember, it's an enterprise fund. It's run like a business. We can balance the budget without having to go up on the cost of our product. Okay? That's our goal.
He deserves it.
All right, pension plans. We have two. We have the PRS, the Portsmouth Supplemental PSRS, Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement. And you've had plenty of briefings on this, and the fire and police. These are closed systems. And who's got that chart? Will you pass it out? This will show you the number of people that are in the system compared today, and the data is as of July 2012 versus five years ago. And what you have are active employees, people who have not yet retired. You've got people who have left employment with the city, but they're vested, which means that they can get a benefit sometime in the future. And then you've got retirees. Now, this is kind of basic pension fund stuff here. There are two elements that make up a pension plan. It's the assets, the assets and the liabilities. And the liabilities are the benefits that you're paying now and the benefits that you're going to pay in the future. And that's the real hard thing to figure out. We know what we're paying a retiree, but someone who's going to work six more years, we know that actuarially, they may live to be 110 or whatever. And bless them if they do. And so trying to figure out what that cost is going to be to us. But the trick is, is to make sure that your assets equal all of your liabilities, not only what you're paying out now, but what you anticipate that you're going to pay out in the future. And that's where the variable is. Because that is a subject of when people retire, how long they live, whether or not we give cost of living increases. Because when we give a cost of living increase, it has an impact on the liability side of this equation. So think about this thing being much like your budget, where revenues equal expenditures. We've got to have assets sufficient enough to equal our liabilities. We need cash. Our liabilities far exceed, far exceed our assets. And we'll show you that. How do you build up? How do you build up the cash in the system? How do you add to? Well, we're required to do an annual contribution, and it's called the ARC, the Annual Required Contribution. Currently in your budget, you put $17.4 million into the two systems. Okay? Well, you can add more money. Take it to 19, take it to 20, take it to 22. But where's... What's going to be the source of that? It's going to be your real estate tax. That's the only source you've got. Okay, so that... The prospects of getting a lot of money into the system from this method is not that great. It doesn't move the ball that far. Okay? We're not even fully funding the ARC. The actuarial study says that we should be putting another $2 million into it to be on the right side of the equation.
And that answers Elizabeth's question.
Yes, sir. The next is that you transfer assets that you have from one fund to the other. Okay? You've got a fund balance in the general fund. And you have a policy that says we're going to carry this much fund balance. Well, actually, you've got more than that. And let's say that you decide that, okay, I'm going to take... And I'm going to just pick a number. I'm going to take $5 million and move it from this fund over to the retirement fund. Ladies and gentlemen, that does not... That's like taking that cup and pouring it into the Elizabeth River and hoping that the...
It goes in, raise it up.
It's not going to do it. The next, and you've heard this before, this says sell, but issue pension obligation bonds. Now, these are taxable bonds. In other words, if you bought the bond, if we were to sell the bond, the interest income that you earn on this, you would have to pick... That's my password.
Bring bread home. Bring a loaf home when you come.
I gave him a special call. That's...
Those retreat.
Yes. You guys are going to have to help me out of this dilemma. Issue pension obligation bonds. These are tax-free bonds. If you buy the bonds, you pay income taxes on the bonds. They still count against our debt limit. Our debt limit is 10% of the total assessed value. We've got plenty of room.
There you go.
Yeah, 10% of our total assessed value of real estate. Okay? And what are we at? We're not even close to that. We have a lot of capacity for that. And then the concept is that you take this money. Now, I'm going to pick $150 million. Okay? Go to the bond market, and you sell $150 million worth of bonds. And right now, the interest rates are low. And so let's say that we can get 4.5% interest. That's what we've got to pay you as the person who bought the bonds. When we pay you back, we're going to pay you back the principal plus 4.5% interest. Okay? Now, we take that money, and we invest it. And we invest it for 20 years or 25. What we're hoping is that good times will come again, and that we will at least get growth that is equal to 4.5% or better. Okay? Now, if you... And the sad thing about pension plans is that, yeah, you can look backwards. You can look backwards for 25 years. And nationwide, for the last 25 years, most public pension plans have exceeded their return on investment goal. Okay? And so, but you... You never know what's going to happen, though. You can't totally use the past to predict the future. But the concept is, is that you get... You sell a big issue, $150 million, you invest it, and you take the Warren Buffett strategy. And you know what that is. You walk away from it. You don't look at it daily. Because if you look at it daily, you'll go nuts. It'll be up one day and down the next, and up the next day, and down two days. And you look at it over the long haul. You don't panic when things happen. Now, when you issue bonds, depending on how you structure the debt, just like if you went to get a house mortgage, there's a good chance that the first month, you won't have a mortgage payment. Typically, when we issue bonds, the first year, we don't have any principal and interest payment. So depending on how we structured this, we could end up not having to pay principal and interest for that first year. Now, the concept would be is that you issue the bonds using the ARC. And remember, we've got 17...
Five million.
Almost 18 million. And so you're spending that anyway. And you're putting it now into the pension plan to try to build up your assets and to meet your liabilities. You use that as debt service against a bigger bond issue. Okay, that's the concept. It's not without risk. It is not without risk. You cannot predict what the return on investment is going to be four years out. I mean, if you could, we'd all be really geniuses because we would have predicted the recession. And we would have taken our monies out of stocks and put it into something really safe, like a hole in the backyard. The safest thing around. The next is... And this is a terrible, terrible alternative. You restructure benefits. And look at the number of employees. If you say, I'm only going to do it for existing employees. How many employees do we have in the supplemental system? It's on that chart that I just passed out, that Brandon... It's 34. You're not going to be able to recapture the assets or cut down on the liabilities with 34 people, which would drive you then to restructure the benefits for people who are already retired. And how fair is that? It's like starting a game and saying, these are the rules. And then well into the game, you change the rules. That is not fair. But it's an alternative. All right, let's look at the numbers. Now, blue is... And we might need the lights back, please. Blue is July 1, 2005, May 7, the year before the Great Recession. And this is the fire and police plan. The accrued liability then was $202 million, almost $203. As of July 1, July 1, 2012, it's grown to almost $238. But this is the telling one right here. In 2007, it nearly had $100,000 in assets, still not enough to cover the outstanding liability. Remember, it's a simple equation. Assets have got to equal liabilities. But look what happened in the five years. It got whacked by $25,000. And...
Million.
25 million. I wish it was 25,000.
Yeah, that would be easy.
And so our unfunded accrued actuarial liability is this number right here in 2007, and it's running by some $60,000.
$60 million.
Thank you. I'm hung up on the numbers. They're so horrible that... Anyway, here's the PSRS. And this one, this one's even more telling. Because this went from having assets of nearly $48 million down to just shy of $28 million. Now, people take the pulse of a pension plan by looking at a couple of key things. The relationship, again, to your assets, to your liabilities, and what is the funding ratio? And so to find the funding ratio, you take your liabilities and you divide it into your assets. And we only fund...
28%.
That pension is 28%.
That's right.
28%. Now, the whole state of Illinois got put on bond alert and downgraded because they dropped into the 30s on their state pension plan. So this is something that we've got to be very sensitive about. The best ratio is to have a 1 to 1. And we're not even at 1 to 1. We're not even at a third on this plan. Go back to the other.
Before you go back, John, let me... Just to make an analogy, I guess, with the stock market and pension obligation funds, if you're going to pay 4 and 1/2, what you see in that middle there is what happened to the stock market over the last, what, five years?
Yes, sir.
So if you're assuming you're going to get at least 4 and 1/2, and you've lost that much over there, that's how much you'll be in the hole. That's the negative piece of the pension obligations. If you need to make at least a 4 and 1/2, and we've already factored in our pension, I think about eight. We just recalculated it back down to 7 and 1/2 for earnings, which is 7 and 1/4 for earnings. So that's good if you can get that delta. But that picture right there tells you what happens if you go the pension obligation route and things don't go our way market-wise.
That's a high five, sir. You hit the ball out of the park on that one. And that's exactly what happened here. The year before 2007, the plans earned more than 15%. The target in 2007 was 8%. Last year, we earned...
Minus 1, minus 0.1, essentially 0.
Did you hear Carol?
Minus 1, 0.
Yeah.
Zero.
So it went from a high of earning 15%, almost 16% in 2006, 2007, to a negative. I mean, we're losing money. All right, so let's have the lights.
I'm going to ramp up.
And we're wrapping up. Again, the simple solution on a pension plan, regardless of where it is, you've got two components. You've got assets, and you've got liabilities. Liberties is made up of the current benefits that you pay and the future benefits. And want your assets always to equal liabilities so you can be wholesome. And you see where we are.
Yep.
So we've got some interesting work to do in the next couple of months. And I just wanted to give you... And I welcome your feedback, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Very good job, John. Absolutely. Okay, that ends your piece.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Lot of information.
Thank you for your questions. They were very good.
Absolutely.
Counselors, are there any council reports?
Yeah, before we go into close, I want to, one, bring up the issue of the non-agenda speakers and a statement here that we plan to read before the meeting tonight to... And we've notified folks early enough because we don't want surprises. We want feedback. We've all talked. I've talked to each one of you individually. We've talked in the past, in past councils, with the tone and the tenor of where we're going in these councils' meetings with our tone and how we deal with each other, how we deal with our public. And looking at nationwide, I also mentioned, not to this council, but last year, about the Civility Accord that we all signed, the mayors at the White House after the Gabby incident and Tucson and their mayor, and how he addressed all the mayors all throughout the country. The tone of what we do, how we do it, and I think Bishop says it best, we can be not agree, but don't be disagreeable. And I think as a result, and there isn't a rule that says we have to air it or not air it, we want to use an opportunity to have our citizens engage with us about how we move forward with this. And we elected, after talking to each one of you, and we're trying to do this now open so everybody knows, to not air these meetings. so everybody know, to, to not air these meetings, and be able to come up with something as a group, us and the citizens, of how we move forward, if it does nothing but create discussion, uh, create an, um, a tone that we wanna move forward with, because we do. Look at all of the things going on in this country, and all of these incidents, and they all start with us, for lack of a better word, being mean to each other, doing things, grandstanding, whatever terminology we wanna use it. So, and, and again, we can all have discussion with this in the open session, but I wanted to read this to the council, and I gave everybody a confidence to, so we can read this to the public, uh, and, and we can have comment here and feedback if we want. The city council has a longstanding practice of providing non-agenda speakers with an opportunity to address matters of public concern as part of council's regular agenda. Council rules allow each speaker up to five minutes to express such concerns, and on a case-by-case situation, a speaker may be granted some additional time to complete his or her statement or presentation. This portion of the meeting has been televised in the past. City council has always encouraged the public to contact our staff and to address city council regarding matters of public concern. However, some non-agenda speakers, instead of using the televised form for the primary purp, purpose of informing council, are interested in abusing this opportunity for the purpose of self-advancement, in order to refocus the non-agenda speaker portion of our council agenda to a communication that's by the speaker to the council. City council has decided to no longer televise the non-agenda speaker portion of this meeting, beginning with tonight's meeting. And any citizen who wishes to address council on a matter that is not part of the council's regular agenda may continue to do so under the same five-minute council rule. The only change is that the citizen comments will not be televised by the city. Now, matters that require response will either be addressed at the same meeting, or made the subject of a report to the council at a later meeting. It has been and continues to be the city council's practice to provide a prompt response through our city embuds, ombudsman, Bernadette Hoag, to each citizen who appears before the council with a matter of public concern. And again, I, I know we've all been getting feedback so far up to now, and again, this is what we wanted, because this is a conversation we wanna have with our citizens. No one's trying to censor, nobody's trying to stop you from saying the good or the bad, but we as a body, we as a people, uh, have to reassess where we are and how we move forward, with being able to dialogue with each other and move forward there. So if, have I said anything that, and I've, and again, we haven't officially had a meeting, but we've talked individually. We've left some of our council members' meetings over the last year with some things that has left all of our heads standing on our back as to, you know, is it the mayor that should probably crack the whip a little harder, or should we, you know, how do we police, you know? And, and again, for all of us to be a part of this and to have this discussion, we thought this would be the, the right time to do it, starting a new year with looking at how we move forward. So there is no tricks, there is no anybody not wanting you to do anything, but we do wanna have this discussion. We put the notice out early enough so people could come armed tonight to speak if they want. We've got a community meeting next week at, is it at I.C. Norcom High School? We really want dialogue. We just don't want you to say, "You're trying to cut us off," or "You're trying to do things." How do we move forward? Because we wanna continue to do the people's business, we wanna have quality meetings, we all are responsible, elected officials and citizens, how we address ourselves and how we move forward. So nobody in Portsmouth, I don't think, is, is concerned about you disagreeing with us. One thing we do is disagree. And so, that's, that's not the issue. It's not that we don't want everybody to do that, but we have to take a look, and, and we all thought that this is first year, it's probably the time to do that. And then after we make these assessments and, and get feedback from the public, then, then we'll move forward in that manner. So, is anybody else, yes, sir, Ms. Moody?
Well, I, I don't agree with it. I think it, uh, it has the appearance of being punitive.
Right.
Um, and the wording self-advan, advancement leads one to think that we don't wanna, we might be afraid, as an elected body, that somebody's gonna run for our seat, and, and they're gonna attack me, attack you. And the other thing is, being the chair of the meeting, you control the gavel. And if somebody's getting personal, out of line, uh, you can, you can call them out of order. In fact, Virginia Beach recently did that, and went the additional step, and had the sergeant-at-arms remove a former elected official from a meeting, because he was getting personal in his comments. I think, I think we have so many senior citizens that can't get to these meetings, uh, that it's important for them to know what the neighbors, what the neighbors feel, what issues the neighbors are coming to council to, to discuss. I think it's important to know that that venue is intimidating to most people. And when a citizen takes their time to come in a very uncomfortable venue, uh, I think they deserve their, their comments to be heard. And many times, we've had constructive comments. In fact, I would say the, the constructive comments out, far outweigh the negative comments in this. And, uh, I know some of us are gonna say, "Well, they, they can still make the comments." Well, it, it's important for other citizens to know, that can't make these meetings, what's being said, what issues are being said in their communities. I'll use, for an example, the toll issue. We've had citizens who've spoke on the toll issue, either communicating upcoming events, or what the impact of tolls will be. They have spoke as non-agenda speakers, and by doing so, that information's being conveyed to anybody watching our public access channels. Yeah, they can still speak, but that communication's not gonna occur now. We had people speak reference schools. I can think of Linda Ridenhour, uh, every once in a while speaks on school issues, uh, that I think she's imparting information's not only important for us to hear, also important for our citizens to hear. So I'm not comfortable with this. I think it does reek of being punitive. I think the citizens certainly pay for that, uh, equipment. I was on council that updated it, and I think the, the cost of that was over $300,000. So I think they have a, they have a right to use the same venue that we use. And I, I never like a situation where we, we gotta do a policy based on maybe a, a couple of people that abuse it. I'm never comfortable with that. So I'm, I'm going on record as, I don't think this is constructive. I don't think as a new council, this sends a good signal, as a new beginning. I, I think it reeks of censorship, quite frankly. But anyway, that's my opinion.
No, that's good. And I think you brought up some valid points and the positive sides of that. And again, it could be, after we have this dialogue, we do our community meeting, it, it is the presiding office, which is the mayor, to crack the whip more, but we still think it's worth having discussions and getting feedback from the citizens, because there's just as many that question, "Why on earth do y'all allow this to go on? Why don't somebody stop this?" And, and so, I mean, you're gonna have both sides. So there's never anything wrong with a dialogue. And I think that's what we're trying to encourage here, and then, and kinda assess things. And there's never a time, Bill, to do that, than at a fresh beginning, looking at what we've actually used. And we've got a lot of history. If you look back, not just three months, go back a year, and you would say, "What on earth, you know, where are we going with this? How far do we let this thing get before we do get to a cliff?" And then start questioning, you know, some of...
Well, I've, I've never had anybody threatening to take me out back to City Hall and beat me.
Oh, they didn't tell you? Oh, okay.
But ironically, we're talking about having a conversation on this subject, but as I understand it, tonight's comments aren't gonna be viewed. So the, the city, those viewers who can't make it to City Hall won't be able to hear the discourse.
Those people call, and they also email. We get lots of those, so it's not like the, that...
No, I'm talking about hearing the comments, and hearing the discussion, hearing the points, whether pro or con about it. I mean, we're, we're just pulling the plug. Matter of fact, there hasn't been a vote on this. I think there should be a formal vote. I intend to make, make a motion tonight. I don't wanna blindside anybody.
Yeah, there's, there's not a policy that says we need to do that, and, and so that's why it doesn't need a formal vote. And again, we as a council...
I think it begs for one.
But we can do that at the meeting. I mean, I mean, so you can state that objection, but I think most of us is not interested in cutting anybody off, but having that dialogue with citizens, especially with our upcoming civic community meeting and things of that nature. Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I, I look at it from two perspectives. I think in doing the business of the city, we always get a lot of knocks anyway, Portsmouth. Other cities are watching the broadcast, and they're hearing the negative things that are being portrayed. And I think if the citizens that come up, they have a concern and wanna be a non-agenda speaker, they, they're supposedly be coming to speak to the council. And our arms buzzman will take care of any things that would come up. I, I thought that was the main threat.
And she will make that public at the next meeting. So if someone came up, when she gives her report to us that is aired, she would say, "The following people spoke last meeting, and had the following concerns, and here's what we did." So it's not like keeping it from the public, it's, so you're right, you're exactly right.
So I, I feel like it is worth a merit in, in looking at it...
Exploring.
And taking it away, and see how it works out.
Ms. Simmons?
Um, I've been public in my thoughts that it wasn't the responsibility of government to, to put non-agenda speakers on television for years. I've said that. However, two, two points to make, pro and con. I've heard from a lot of senior citizens in the last couple of weeks, and, and I hadn't really thought about their view of not being able to get here, um, and how they learn, not so much about the bad stuff, but the good stuff. The toll issue is a good one. The, the person from the March of Dimes, it gets up to talk about, you know, the upcoming whatever it is. There are a lot of folks who use that as good information, people look to that for information about the city. And that's a great thing. I, I would like to suggest these things, you know? I'm not gonna fall on my sword over putting this on TV or not. If everybody wants it, fine. I think, A, I think we would be well-served if, if you could put the hammer down when people get personal, but if we ask you to do that, then we have to stand behind you and not let you be the bad guy. We, we have to, you know, give you the high sign, buzz in, whatever, say, you know, "This person's going, you know, you, you can't attack Paige Cherry." Sorry, that's not allowed. I would like to see us have this conversation tonight, and on the 15th, and revisit this issue when we come back at the next meeting, and then decide what we wanna do, but not pull the plug until then. I think we need to have the conversation first.
Absolutely. Listen, Meek, okay, you don't...
Paige was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, no.
Well, one thing, you know, as we were, as I was campaigning, um, it was how we're gonna bring revenue in, you know? And the way you're gonna bring revenues is by bringing businesses in. By, you're competing with other cities already, getting the businesses come here, you know? But when we go on television, we bash, bash the city every other week. If you're a business, I'm a business owner, I'm, I'm investing in the city, I'd look at it two ways. I look at it, I'm like, "Why in the world would I wanna go over there when I can go to Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, or Suffolk? Taxes are high, and the people, there's always something going on." That's one. Two, if I'm a family, and I'm a family man, my, why would I want to bring my family over here? If every other week, I got somebody bashing, talking about... So it's gotta be both. They, when they come up there, they got an understanding, "Look, I'm up here to present my case to the city council, and it's our job to take what they say and do something about it." In the past, what's happened is, we just slid it to the side. Or we, as the council, said, "Mr. Manager, we make sure you look at it, look into it." And then he passed it to the... And I'm not saying nobody didn't do their job, but that's, that's been the past. That's the city council. If we're gonna take them off the air, or we're not, either way, we have to make sure the, the citizens' voice are, is heard. That's what we all ran on. And they put us here to make sure their voice is recognized. But at the same time, the people have spoken and elected these people. So the five or 10 that come up every week and bash them, there's no need for that. Everybody's adults, you go up, you say your concerns, you say your reasons, you know, what your needs are, and let us handle it. And then if we don't, you come up. This is a new council. We can't, I can't change nothing to old for the last, was 1890 was your, the pipes in the grounds? I can't change none of that. But I think you got a council that wants to work together, that wants to move the city forward. I think we got, you know, a lot of good people with great ideas, and I think John Rose is doing a great job, and some of the others, and I, I think we really can go forward, and I don't think this should be a stumbling block.
And Ms., oh, Ms. Chair?
Yeah, no, thank you.
I was before Benito's, but that's all right. I'm used to that.
Just go ahead, you're good.
Okay. Yeah, you know, and I'm not falling on the sword either way, either, but, um, we, we did have brief discussions on this, as, as everybody here knows, and, and the consensus was that, you know, we would take this action. I would just ask that you consider changing something in your statement, the, the self-advancement that Mr. Moody spoke to. I think maybe, maybe, um, may strike some, to a longer chord with some people, and, and maybe some words to the effect of the personal attacks or disrespectful...
And that's in the council rules. That's in the regulations.
Yeah, the, the chair can control that.
So, but, um, you know, um, all citizens should be heard, and everybody should get the same amount of time to be heard. What I was, what I found troubling was, when I sat there the night, that, uh, your family was in, was in the audience. And there was some what I considered disrespectful things said, that I wouldn't have wanted my daughter to hear some people say to me on that, on that dice. And, yeah, it was one or two people, it wasn't all the non-agenda speakers, and you sat there and took it.
Took it. As I always do, as we always do.
As you always do. So I don't know how we fix those things, but those things we have to fix. And, and if it takes taking this off the air for a little while, for people to get it, you know, maybe we come back and bring it back on the air later. But I think if we're gonna do something, nothing is gonna change. The best way to keep getting the same result is keep doing the same thing. So if you, if, if, if you want to fix something, you gotta make a change, and then maybe, as, as Councilwoman Simmons said, we come back and revisit it some button time, and, and things change. But we can't continue to allow, uh, personal attacks and disrespectful attacks to the chair or...
That's whether it's on TV or not. That's, doesn't matter.
But this is the problem when it's on TV. When it's on TV, and I go to Norfolk every day because I work there. They watch our council meetings and don't watch their own's. And they tell me this. Why do they watch our council meeting? Because they're about three or four people, that they wanna see what they're gonna say, and who they're gonna attack, who they're gonna attack this week. So if, if we can wrap our arms around that and, and fix that, then we can revisit and come back. But I, but I think, I think as, as we say, starting a fresh, this new year, we need to do something to try to, to not, not start off on that same plane this year, in that same direction. And we can, we, we seven cannot change anything we want to, just about whenever we want to. So if we decide in March, April, we wanna change it back, we can do that. And likewise, if we come back in March, April, and it goes back down the same road, we can go right back, you know, fix it again. But, but we have to do something to, to try to rein those things in, because the people, the people elected you to, to do a job for them, not to be a punching bag.
Ms. Rand?
I think everybody said everything I wanted to say, but first of all, I think we need to bear in mind that we are subservient to the people who put us in office. And we are a government of, for, and by the people, and we cannot forget that. At the same time, there are certain rules and regulations of respect that we should have for the constituents who come to speak to us, and that... have for the constituents who come to speak to us, and that we should also give back to them in the same manner. It doesn't mean that we have to agree, but we need to be respectful, and we have to bear in mind, they bear the burdens of the expense of the city. They are the taxpayers, and they need to have a voice if they are spending money and investing with us. I also feel that one of the things is, make sure that we do not make exceptions based on whether or not I know an individual who's speaking...
Consistent.
...as opposed to an individual who may be coming for us for the first time. Equal treatment for all people, because whatever they are going to render and speak to us, it's for us to understand and to give us some guidelines of how we operate. The other thing that I want to bring to mind is that that timeline is crucial. Either we have a designated time for speakers or we don't. I don't care if it's a large group of speakers or if it's a small group, whatever that time is, five minutes, let's not make differences because I live next to you. So, I'm going to bend because of that. We are the representatives of the people, for the people, and by the people, and as such, we are to treat them with the same dignity that we want to come back to us. And we don't always do that. We are not consistent sometimes. Maybe we don't see it, but others who view us see it, and if you take time and view the programs that are aired, even our demeanor as we're sitting there, sends a message to the audience who may not be sitting in front of us, and I think that's something we, you know, can bear in mind and be respectful. We don't have to agree, but at least be respectful to one another. Thank you.
And I think when a couple of us spoke, we talked about that same matter, is we're just as part of this equation as our public, and nobody is saying it's just one or the other, which is why we said, hey, maybe this is a good time to have a fresh conversation with folks and not just have a punching bag and you're taking my rights, but, because I think we all enjoy this, and I think we want to make sure that we provide this service, and people that want to sit home and watch that can see and hear those things, but I think nobody wants to be the bad guy, be the person that keeps determining whether somebody's over the line or under the line, and having the conversation may be able to reset the table for the whole citizens, so people understand, and we had that conversation, and then, again, like Vice Mayor said, go back and revisit that. So, I mean, I'm open to those things, and I think we all want to make sure we start with a fresh approach, and make sure we all, and you know, a lot of people still think this is a debate, that they come up and we answer their questions, and we do not do that. We try to do that if we can, but our job is to listen to the citizens. If we have the manager or the attorney or someone that can answer that, we'll do it then, but if not, we get it, we document it, and we take action. It is not there for them to ask all of us and say, look at you all sitting there like a knot on a log, and we are not, and most people think we're supposed to respond, and so again, and I think probably getting the clerk before each meeting to remind them during the refresher of the non-agenda meeting that we are not here to answer your questions. You're here to bring, hopefully you have gone to a department or to the manager or assessor somewhere and tried to get some help and couldn't, and so you're bringing that to the council, and then we'll take that under. If we knew what you were talking about, that'd be different. So, this is not a come up to ask questions and we answer, and then somebody say, well, you answered her question, but you didn't answer his. So, a lot of this is educating the public as well, so, I mean, a fresh start to look at this and a conversation, I think would do all of us well, so, I mean, I agree with Vice Mayor Cherry there. Okay, Ms. Moody?
A suggestion was made, that I thought was a good suggestion, and that's to, let's delay this until the next meeting and see how the citizens react, see what comments that we have, and who knows, maybe the discourse would be better. So, I'd like to see if there's a consensus for that. I think Elizabeth raised that, so I know she supports it, I support it.
And I think it's four of us that say we need to take a look at it, so...
You need to look at it.
Do you want to pull the plug tonight?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so you for, Bishop's for pulling the plug, Danny's for pulling the plug?
Yes.
Okay.
And I really do want the conversation with people tonight at the community meeting, and, well, that's what we want. I mean, that's exactly why we want to do this. We're not doing it for any other reason. We want to have this conversation, and we want to make sure that we all do move in a positive and constructive direction as we go forward. I mean, this civility matter, and I got to tell you, and it is throughout this country.
Yes, it is.
It is throughout this country, everybody going a little step too further, and then the next person trying to one-up that person, and we all, after something happens that we're not proud of, none of us want to sit back and look and say, well, we do our responsibility and our job as to making sure you get that shock factor, and maybe you call the pulling the plug a shock factor to make sure people have the conversation. Come out and tell us. That's all we're saying.
Mayor...
Yes, ma'am.
Just one thing, let's make sure when we say the timeline, it's that we adhere to it.
We're here, oh, yeah.
As long as we know what the timeline is, I don't care what, how much time we may have, but other people may have something that they have to say, but we sometime, we deviate away.
Five minutes is five minutes.
Five minutes is five minutes.
Up to the chair to enforce that.
That's right.
The result might be we got a weak leader, and I'll take that one too, but, okay, thank y'all for that, and we'll do that at the, is anything else items submitted? Okay, we're going to get a motion to go into close.
Okay. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711 for the following purposes. Discussion, consideration, or interview of a candidate for appointment to the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission as permitted under subsection A- A.1 and B. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff regarding two matters of actual litigation involving claims against the city and a legal matter involving the city's late security as permitted under subsection A.7.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.